All right, item number 13. Discussions of legal and practical constraints on addressing homelessness. And we have several members of our staff to provide the presentation.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. We're here tonight because on June 20th, the council requested this agenda item for us as staff to go over and educate the council and the public on what the latest developments are in the legal world about the restraints or the constraints, the legal constraints on the city, on addressing homelessness in the city, and also the more operational and practical constraints that the city faces with addressing homelessness in Lompoc. So I'm going to start off tonight with the legal constraints. There have been some landmark and very important federal court cases that have occurred over the last few years. Most importantly, the Martin versus City of Boise, Idaho case that came down in 2019 that has kind of set the standard for city regulations on camping and sleeping in public places in towns in the United States. So as explained in the staff report, one of the ways to address homelessness is to address the cause of homelessness or the impacts of homelessness on people who are homeless. And those are things like the city allocating funds towards affordable housing programs or job programs, food banks, job training programs, homeless shelters, and subsidizing public transportation. Those are the kind of things that there are not really any legal constraints on the city being able to allocate funds towards those, but they're also the type of things that are traditionally the responsibility of the county or the state government and not the local city government. So what we're mostly going to focus on here is the addressing the impacts that homelessness has on the community where people who are unhoused and homeless live. And there are some legal constraints that the courts have placed on the city in that area. So the first and the most important and landmark rule is that we have to remember that being homelessness is not a crime that we can punish criminally, simply the fact of being homeless. And there are historically some cities that have attempted to criminalize things like sleeping in public places. And in 2019, and even in some precursor cases in the early 2000s, the federal courts have held that making it a crime to sleep in a public place that's open to the public is a violation of the Eighth Amendment, which is the prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment in our U.S. Constitution. So what the court in the Martin versus Boise case in 2019 held is that if you want to enforce a city regulation on sleeping or camping in public places, you can do that, but there needs to be an available place for people who are homeless, people who need shelter, to sleep where they will not be penalized or punished for sleeping or doing any of the things that are an unavoidable consequence of being homeless. So things like sitting, lying, sleeping on the streets, or other property that is open to the public, including the sidewalks, cannot be criminalized when no sleeping space is practically available in any shelter, either in the city or nearby the city, within a reasonable distance. So we are fortunate in Lompoc to have the Bridge House Shelter, which is just outside city limits. And the staff, after I speak tonight, will maybe go in further into further detail about whether and how the Bridge House makes shelter beds available in Lompoc that allows us to do things like enforce camping rules and time restrictions that we have on some of our public property here in Lompoc. I am first going to only be talking about property that is open, that's public property, and property open to the public. If we, I'll talk a little bit about private property, but private property is sort of a different discussion because the owners of private property can simply enforce trespass rules against anyone who is a trespasser or squatter on their property. They can call the police, and if they give the police the proper authorization, private property owner can evict, so to speak, any person who's on their property that they do not want to be on their property. City cannot enter private property and remove someone unless we're requested by the property owner to do that, or unless the person is committing some other crime. So we have this General Martin versus Boise case that says we can't ban sleeping on public property, we can't ban camping on public property unless there is a available bed, shelter bed, or place for people who need shelter to sleep. So does that mean that a person who needs shelter can sleep wherever they want, whenever they want, on public property in the city? Well, no, it doesn't because we can adopt, if we wanted to adopt an anti-camping ordinance, that's an ordinance that regulates where people can sleep, camp, store their personal property on public property, we can do that. What the Martin versus Boise case says is you can do it in certain parts of the city. You cannot have an all-encompassing ban on camping or sleeping on public property in the entire city because then there would be no available place for a person to sleep who needs shelter. If we have an anti-camping ordinance, if we have regulations on where people can camp or store their property on public property, we can go about enforcing those rules, but we have to keep in mind that the courts have told us that there, that we have to respect the property rights of homeless people as well. And so what that means is, let's say that there is an encampment, they're in violation of some time restriction ordinance, or they're in violation of some camping ordinance that the city may adopt. What the code enforcement or the police department might do to enforce that ordinance is we go out and we give a notice to all the persons who are living in that encampment, and we give them a period of time that they have to vacate the property and clean up their personal belongings from the property because it's in violation of our camping ordinance or our time restrictions on public property. It needs to be a reasonable period of notice. If it's, there are some encampments, maybe they've been there for only a few days, when a 24-hour notice would be reasonable. There are some encampments, if they've been there for a long period of, very long period of time, maybe a 30-day notice would be reasonable. Give them a period of time that they need to vacate the property. And then once that period of time passes, there have been cases, court cases in the past, where cities have gone into the encampment, the period, notice period passed, and just disposed, evicted the persons who are living there, and just disposed of all of their personal property at that moment. And the courts, there's a case called Levon versus City of Los Angeles, held in 2012, that that is illegal, and that is a violation of their, of those person's Fourth Amendment rights for unreasonable searches and seizures. And what a local government needs to do instead is we must collect the personal property of the persons who are living in the encampment, and we must store it for a reasonable period, and then allow, give them a notice where that property is stored, and where they can come to claim the property after the city has stored it there. And again, there's nothing in the law or in any court case that defines how long a city has to store property like that. Some cities have adopted a rule of 30 days and find that that's reasonable. Some store for 60 days, some store for 90 days. I think all of those are reasonable periods of time. There are certain cases that are interesting where the courts have held that some objects are just unreasonably large and don't need to be stored, like a 20-by-40-foot shipping container that a, I suppose, a homeless person had in their encampment or was living inside. The courts held that that is just unwieldy and unreasonable to have to store that for 30, 60, or 90 days. There's also a rule that if any of the property is creating an imminent threat to the health and safety of the public, that the city does not have to store the property for any period of time and can just dispose of that property, I suppose. Can't think of what an example of that might be. Also in that circumstance, if the encampment or the property is creating an imminent threat to public health or safety, that that can be removed by the city without having any 30-day notice beforehand or any kind of notice beforehand if the property is causing an imminent health and safety threat. Also, if the property in the encampment is obviously trash, or rubbish, or has obviously been abandoned by residents of the encampment, then the city can dispose of that property as well without having to store it. So thus far, I've been talking about public property that's open to the public and the constraints that we have on regulating camping and sleeping on public property that's open to the public. But there are times, and that's, this council has adopted rules like this in the past few months and years, where we take public property that's open to the public and we decide that we're going to close that property to the public. We've already done this for things like the city hall during nighttime hours when it's closed, well, it's closed to the public, the public can't just come in. The city hall during all hours of the day behind the counter is closed to the public, public can't just come in. So we can do things like restrict all persons, members of the public, from being in certain areas of certain public property, and we don't need to then worry about, we don't need to give notice to a person who is on public property during times when there's prohibited by our rules that have closed the public property. We can just immediately evict that person or remove that person from public property that's been closed to the public. We did this very recently with the airport property. We closed a portion of the airport property that was north of George Miller Drive and north of the runway on the airport property during the overnight hours. We closed that to just all members of the public. Finally, there are some rules about selective enforcement of ordinances, like, for example, if we close a piece of public property to all members of the public, we have to then enforce that closure against all members of the public, and we cannot selectively enforce it against, say, people who are living in encampments or tents on the property, but not enforce it against others who are just maybe walking their dog through the property. We have to enforce our rules equally and neutrally against all members, against all members of the public. And finally, we have to, the courts have told us, make sure that our ordinances are not vague and that they are very clear in prohibiting conduct so that members of the public know exactly what type of conduct is prohibited. So in 2014, there was another City of Los Angeles case where the City of LA had prohibited using a vehicle as living quarters, quote, "as living quarters." And that ordinance was challenged because it was unclear on what that really meant, what type of conduct in your vehicle was prohibited, and what type of conduct in your vehicle was allowed. Is it okay to sleep inside your vehicle, or is, does that mean you're using it as living quarters? Is it okay to eat inside your vehicle, or does that mean you're using it as living quarters? Can you store personal belongings in your vehicle? So the idea is, we have to be really careful when we are adopting something like a regulation on camping or storing property on public property that we define and explain exactly the type of conduct that is prohibited and that's being regulated. The city, the city currently does not have a anti-camping ordinance or any regulation on camping on public property that is open to the public. The city code enforcement, community development staff is currently working on an ordinance like that to present to the city council. And finally, I would note that we have a restriction on us in the City of Lompoc because we have Caltrans right-of-way in, that runs through town on Ocean and on H Highway 1. The city lacks authority to adopt regulations on camping or public property that is in the Caltrans right-of-way, that is Caltrans responsibility. This is why you have a lot of, in many cities all over California, you see that on freeway on-ramps and freeway off-ramps, there are encampments. And there may not be encampments in other parts of those cities, but on freeway on-ramps and off-ramps, there are, and this is because the cities don't have the regulatory authority there, Caltrans does. And Caltrans does have a cleanup program for addressing campers on their property, but they only have a certain number of limited resources to be able to get to all of them, and there are more than they can get to. So I hope that that was somewhat enlightening and educational about the legal constraints on the city when addressing homelessness on public property. I'm going to turn it over to either our police chief or our community development director right now to speak about either code enforcement or what our law enforcement does in Lompoc.
So I do want to just preface this with, I feel like we have been so impactful in the last six months. We talked about Caltrans. You might have noticed the encampment resolution that occurred at the bridge. That was in a collaborative partnership with Caltrans. We brought it to their attention, we stayed in contact with them, and we got resolution. There are grant funds that we had applied with in partnership with the county to address encampments along that area, under the bridge, and on any highways, and that was, that was kind of what occurred because of that. So super grateful to have code enforcement staff, so we have the people and the bodies we need to pay attention to this and respond and participate. But to kind of give you an idea of the process from a community member's side of things is typically a citizen will submit a citizen concern form through our online portal, and what that does is it provides for easy tracking, data analysis, it automatically routes to the appropriate departments and divisions, and then it also allows us to have comprehensive data centralization so we can go to one point and pool all this information. It allows for photos to be there, so we get really good before shots, and then once we reach resolution, we're able to utilize those photos to show you some really good before-and-afters and just how effective we can be. And then once that comes in, usually within 24 hours, our code enforcement officer or our development services assistant will forward that to the appropriate team members that we need assistance with to get that done, whether that be PD, urban forestry. We recently just had a resolution on the bike path where that was just all hands on deck, everyone was there helping for that one. The other component that our code enforcement officer, a really integral piece to this is we have an excellent relationship with our homeless outreach team and our shelter service providers. So that is usually the first contact, and we say, hey, do you have beds available? Can you please get out to this site? Have you made contact with these, these persons that are experiencing homelessness? And in most cases, they already have a relationship with them, and usually they will respond out there within 24, 48 hours and make contact again. Then they'll respond, our outreach team will respond to our code enforcement team and say, we made contact, we let them know that you're going to be going out there soon, they are aware. Most times, they just allow it to go until, you know, we're like, no, you have to get out of this area. So they, we have yet to run into an instance where we were told no beds were available. We have been given assurance that beds will be made available. As you guys are all aware, they have the pallet homes out there, they have emergency shelter beds, and unfortunately, a lot of the persons that are offered shelter, they don't take it. They tend to be a service-resistant population, and so that makes it a little challenging, but as long as we have the beds available, which we always verify first, then we've done our due diligence. So that's kind of how quickly we can act on our city-owned properties. Obviously, we have to do the noticing and all that good stuff, coordinate with a, there's a lot of waste and items afterwards, so we have to coordinate with a service provider that cleans all that up. But once we get the ball rolling, it's usually, you know, seven days on a regular encampment size that hasn't been established for that long. And then on the private property ones, it can be a little more challenging because we depend on the private property owner to take action. And sometimes private property owners don't live here, or they're very hard to get a hold of. So while we recognize it's not their fault, someone has, you know, taken up an encampment on their private property, they are responsible. So typically, they'll get, you know, the little warning notice saying, hey, there are people in your, on your private property, you need to get this cleaned up, you need to address this. And then we also let them know there is a homeless shelter service provider you can reach out to, and we give them that information. We try to give them as much guidance as possible, one, to help get the persons off their property, and then two, to put in deterrence to stop re-encampment. And then the other really important piece that we partner with our police department on is, on the front end, we send them a no trespassing form, and if they choose to participate in that and, and fill out that form and submit it to the police department, that gives our police department the, I guess, authorization to go in and enforce no trespassing on that property. So the, you got a little flow sheet that kind of tells you what would happen on that process, and so I think that leaves it for PD now.
Finish up here. So I think you've heard a lot tonight. I think that we've, as a city, as a police department, code enforcement, we've shown the public our compassion for this portion of our community, and we're always going to continue to have that compassion, hence reaching out to the shelter services and all the other resources that we have available to as a city before we go out and have to take any kind of action against anybody that's currently living homeless. What I also would like to remind, the flow sheet that you have in front of you is not a policy, it's a, it's more like a best guess for us of how things can go because, which you have to understand what this portion of the community is, some people choose to live like that, they don't have any drug or alcohol or mental health issues, they just like the lifestyle. Then we have to deal with the mental health aspect of it, and maybe we have to deal with the drug and alcohol. So for the police department, it becomes very time-intensive for us to focus in and deal with some of the individuals that we're dealing with. And as Chrissy has indicated, some of these people are very resistive to some of the shelter services because there's parameters that the shelter services put on them being in those shelters. Must be sober, no drugs on premise, be in at this hour, be out by this hour. And they just don't want to live that lifestyle. So then we're left figuring out, how do we best address that individual? You know, for the police department, as you're well aware, you know, our staffing is not a hiring issue so much anymore, it's really, we have some people off with workman's comp, workman's comp-related issues, so we don't have the staffing right now to put full-time bodies towards us, but the city has, and you have given us two additional bodies that will work in that direction once I'm able to get the staffing back on patrol to be able to put people in those roles. Chrissy's already come down what the flow chart is and what we go. We'll always go out first and see are there shelter spa, is there shelter space available? If that shelter space is available, then we'll work with the shelter services to get those people into those pallet houses or wherever it is that the, that Good Samaritan could put them up at. In those situations where they're not available, then we work with them the best way we can, and we try to do everything we can to avoid taking any kind of action against them as a police department. It's just, that's not going to help anybody, but we still, we still have to protect the public, and we still have to honor the public's needs, and, and if these people are interfering with the flow of traffic or sidewalk or any of those situations, we do have the authority to have to deal with those if we, if we have to. The private property is key. You're the private property owner. It's a trespassing issue. If you don't want that person trespassing on your property, give us the authority with the trespassing letter so that we can go in and act on that and, and encourage those people to move. And it's always that way first, it's, hey, you're on private property, we have the letter, they don't want you here, we're asking you to leave. We're not just going in and throwing handcuffs on them and saying, you're out. Now, we do have that authority if it gets to that point, but we always try to resolve this thing in a better way, in a long-term way versus an immediate get them off. So, you know, we've been doing this a long time, and I think we have shown, as I said earlier, that we're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can to take that portion of our community and try to raise them and put them in a better place. For me, right now, it's just really about staffing, but once we get there, we'll have some staff to really focus in and assist and get these people into better places. With that, I don't think we have much more to share, and if you have any questions, we'll try to answer them.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Minus the bed availability, is this the same rule as non-licensed vendors?
The same rule as non-licensing. Do you mean that we have to allow somewhere in the city for non-licensed vendors?
Well, you know, let's say I'm going to sell pizzas on the sidewalk. Is it the same rules for non-licensed, non-permitted businesses? We can go in, just like this flow chart, basically?
A non-licensed, non-permitted street vendor? I don't think I would consider them to be camping or habitating on the sidewalk, and so I think that we could take, we could definitely issue citations to them without regard to whether there's a shelter bed, of course. It's a good question about whether we can remove their property from the sidewalk. I think that's what, I think that's what you're getting at, whether we can remove their property from the sidewalk, just like we were talking about with the homeless encampment.
You know, what happens, you know, you move them, but they pop somewhere else, so, you know, all of a sudden, you've got assets that could be doing something else, chasing the pizza guy, you know? So I just wondered, is, do you need anything special to go after the illegal vendors?
Well, certainly not. Well, certainly not to cite them, but to confiscate their property. I don't know if the chief has anything to add on this, but it may be, it may be something similar.
I could provide a little, we're working on this right now. So the, our code enforcement team and we're working with the county public health and as well as our police department are helping us out here. We will be going out, can't tell you when, but after hours, weekends. And we will be initiating, we started with educating the vendors in our community who may or may not be permitted. And we started with an education campaign and pushing information out. We are now at the point where if they are still having pop-up whatever selling without their permit, that they will now start receiving administrative citations. Those administrative citations are very minimal. I want to say the first one is either 25 or $50, which, I mean, they make that in an hour of business. So I don't know that they care that much. But where we have a little bit more bite is on the second citation, which then escalates to, I believe, 100. And then the third citation is 500. And then everyone after that is an additional 500. So unfortunately, you know, we don't want to slap people with fines. But, you know, you have to have a reason to make these vendors not want to sell and set up in Lompoc anymore. So we will likely see a curtail in the number of them out there as they start getting these citations. I, I will be very honest, I, I'm concerned with the piece that will come after, which is, how do we collect on these citations that go to certain persons who perhaps aren't from Lompoc, they're from LA and they're just dropped off and they get a citation? But that will be something we work with our city attorney's office to collect on. So we will, we're no longer being complacent as a community. We have people that can go out and collaborate with others and address these. And that is the most important part.
Councilmember Vega.
Chief, some of the after-effects of, and not to label homeless. We're talking about people that, crime and things like that. For the businesses and things, you know, some of the repercussions that happen by having people out there with no income and things like that, I mean, what are the constraints there? I know the business owners have asked me, you know, and they've run into, you know, unheard of theft. You know what I mean? People are having to, as we know from some of the cleanups too, without labeling anything, we know that a lot of, a lot of it is from where do they get their stuff? You know what I mean though? So what are, what are your constraints there? Is it above Lompoc, city of Lompoc? Or is it from the state level as far as theft and everything? Since we're educating the public on why, why it's allowed and, and festering, you know?
Well, I don't know if allowed is the best word. I, I think the problem is multi-level. We know that the state of California has taken petty theft from the $400 range up to the $900 range. And we know that people are taking advantage of that. And we know that the courts in California are not working as best as they used to, right? But we also have our own internal problems in the community where these thefts are occurring in some of our retail stores. But when the police department shows up to take the report, they say, well, we, we don't really want to press charges. So that's frustrating for us because we're responding and we might be able to do some follow-up and figure out who somebody is, but they're saying, nah, we don't want to do anything. So I would encourage any of the business owners, any of, any of the corporate businesses to say, support us, let us go after these people. And let's send a message to those that are doing this that, that we will go after you and we will prosecute you if you come into our store. Many of the stores are getting product taken every day.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, we need the support from the private industry to prosecute. Just like we need support from the private citizen, if you're going to press charges, if you, if you have a trespassing clause, follow through with that so that we can hold these people accountable when we take them into custody for trespassing on your private property. So there's, I wish it was just on one button that we could push and fix this, but it really isn't. There's many, many layers to it.
You know, you mentioned private property versus public, and we did that on the homeless side. Again, I'm advocating for business economic development. We just spent some money, we're investing to try and help Lompoc. The chamber's trying to help, we want to help them also, okay? Because without controlling some of this, why would some people want to invest if we don't have some sort of control within Lompoc, you know? And, and saying, hey, you're going to be safe, it's going to be sanitary. It's not just because you have money, we can fine you and ticket you. But we have people that are taking advantage, as you said, of the economic balance of Lompoc. You can't just have everyone stealing from everyone and expect them to be successful. So we have to have some way of controlling our own destiny within Lompoc. Because what happens here is we have, we have to know what we can and can't do. So is, is it a public place, a store? I know it's a mixed question here. Or is it, can, can it be considered private, you know, based on the owners of the property? And as you mentioned, you know, can they ask that they be prosecuted? And is that even going to work? I think, you know what I'm saying? It's kind of like you can't protect your own inventory and you have to wire everything up and put safety nets and everything, you know? So it kind of takes the flavor away from a small community like this.
Yeah, I don't ever want to see this community have to get to the point where we're having to throw chain link up on products inside of a store. It's just not good for anybody. It's definitely not good for the economics in our community. But I think, you know, the truth, there's, you, you hear this all the time. Law enforcement needs the community to help us enforce crime in our city and make it better. So on these levels, we have to have people willing to prosecute. So if a crime happens in my presence and it's a misdemeanor, then I can act on it as a police officer. I have to see it, right? We're not out there and we're not in the stores to see the crime happening. So we rely on the people who run the business, who witnessed it, to prosecute these people, maybe do a citizen's arrest if they were that close to it. So it's really important that everybody understands that and that they engage with us and prosecute these people so that we can hold them accountable. And I think once, once we see a change in, in, in the businesses supporting that more, then the message will start getting out to some of these people who are taking advantage of that, that maybe it's not such a good idea anymore. And then we can see that drop.
Thank you. Under a scenario here of the homeless seem to have immunity, and I'm not targeting the homeless. I'm saying anybody out there that would threaten someone's safety or you feel unsafe. I mean, even with cannabis, we had buffer zones on certain areas and stuff. You know, it seems like you would have had something to do. Like if you go to, there used to be talk about they'd have to stay away from ATMs and banks and everything. I don't see it being enforced at all anymore. So basically, I can tell you that where I bank, they're, they're laying all over the place there. And it makes you wonder and it makes you feel unsure and unsafe that, you know, you can go to an ATM at night and, and there are people laying there and sleeping. And it's, it's a little unnerving, you know? So I guess my question is, if, if someone like that came up to you and pushed you and bumped you on the, and pushed you on the sidewalk or something, and they deem that, hey, we're homeless and we don't, we're, I mean, is that still going to protect them? Is that what I'm saying though? I mean, basically, they get away with.
No, I, I, I don't think that. I think if, if any, anybody were, whether, what, regardless of what their living conditions are in the community, if you put your hands on somebody, if you push somebody, you've committed a crime separate of what your economic status is.
Yeah.
And we're going to address that. We need your support, you need to tell us, you need to report, you need to follow through with it when we go to court. Battery is battery regardless of where you are economically.
Thank you. I just wanted a little clarification, see what kind of immunity they do have.
With your scenario, what I would say is let's contact that bank and say, give us a trespassing clause. So as the officers are patrolling at night and they see that on the bank property, now they can go in and address specifically to that bank and that property, you're trespassing. We're encouraging you to leave. Failure to leave is going to end, end you up in jail. And then what we do, and we've worked with the city on this, to get trash cans that have a mechanism set up so we can throw locks on them. So if we do take somebody into custody that has their property right there, we encourage them to tell us what is trash and what is not. And what is not trash, we take inventory of and we book it and we put it in these cans and we store it. And then we give them the opportunity to come claim that within 60 days. After 60 days, then we, if they haven't come to claim it, then we, we, we take it out to the landfill. So we are following all the legal requirements that the Boise decision has made and, and other decisions to make sure that we're doing it right. And I think it's always been a priority for the city.
I thank you. And I know you guys are constrained, restrained or whatever. Just that, you know, when we come up with creating new ordinances and new laws, it makes you wonder if it's frivolous sometimes because it seems like they threw a whole bunch of it in the trash. You know what I mean? Based on what the state wants. You know, it seems like it really does handicap you to a point because no one ever said that just because all the decisions of the state, they just throw all the local ordinances away, you know? Because it kind of does handicap you, you know, in the legal system.
And I would also say that there was some personnel changes recently into DA's office that we've got a much more aggressive DA's office than we've seen in a number of years that are totally supporting everything that the police department is doing right now. They're also calling us out on our shortcomings and our, our officers are young and they're learning from that. And that's what I would hope for. But we are seeing a change in that from on the prosecution side and on the judge, and the decisions that the judge is making on these cases. So, you know, it takes, it takes many layers of the judicial system to, to, to address a lot of these issues. And we're starting to see some positive movement in those directions. But we have to all work together and, and if you're calling the police because somebody is trespassing and you don't want them there, please follow up with that. And if you, if you have a bank that has that problem, then let's get those people noticed and, and get a, a form out to them so we can address that while we're driving around at night.
Thank you. And I, I think it's important that we have that conversation and that cooperation with the chamber and people that we're investing in for economic development because singularly, we're not able to do it. You know what I mean? So maybe there is a way to make something positive happen. So thank you.
Councilmember Wall.
So I have a couple of different things. And Chief, I'll definitely hit you up with a couple of things, but I'll bounce around if that's okay. First one for fun, just, you know, this shouldn't be a fun topic, but maybe as an exercise to keep us awake. For the city attorney, this is a little bit of a loaded question, but hear me out. For many of us that have retirement accounts or we go investing, when you sign up for something, you choose your level of risk, right? You say, I want to be really aggressive, want to be medium, or I want to be very safe. So as a city, we're tasked with abiding by some sort of legal parameters. As a city, are we in the extra extremely safe, avoid all risk on the legal side? Are we in the middle or are we aggressive? And as you would admit, I'm sure cities land all over the spectrum there.
Cities land all over the place, but we in Lompoc, I've worked very closely with staff and staff is very, very careful about staying in the extra super safe category when we're dealing with these issues.
And so I, I want to let the community know, I can, we hear and understand a lot of the frustrations. Do more, do more. There are some legal things where we have a choice to make. Do we stick our neck, neck out and take on a liability risk? Worst case scenario, do we have to pay out some money because we got sued from somebody that caught us because we didn't abide by the letter of some law? There are a lot of complicated things that we have to, to take into consideration. So again, I, I feel like we're doing the best that we can. We're trying to be aggressive where we can. But again, we're not trying to, to put our neck out and get swatted by the state or by the court. So I think that's an important point that we should all recognize. Now, I could have misunderstood, but I heard something, I think, Christie, you might have mentioned that most occasions, don't run into an issue of not having a bed available. Did I misunderstand that?
No. We've yet to have an issue where if someone wants a bed, we can't find them a bed. We, we always find them a bed. We have a really good relationship with the shelter system.
So I guess my, my question, and I need a little bit of enlightenment. It's always been our, it's been the thing that's challenged us to be able to say, I'm sorry, you can't be there. Why? Because we have a bed for you, right? Layman's terms, as long as we have a place for you, we can technically say, you're not allowed to be here. So if that's the case, why are we, why can't we get in and just move everyone in the next week?
Well, they have to be.
Fair question.
You have to verify each, each, so let's just say we go out to the airport. Everybody, that's everybody's big complaint. I get at least three or four of those a day. So if I went out there and I told them, okay, there's 17 of you out here, I got 17 beds. Go, go over there, hurry up, go. You think they're going to go? No. So that's when we have to get a little bit creative in making contact, trying to find out what the constraints are for those individuals who are experiencing homelessness. And remember, these are human beings. I know that people are frustrated, but these are human beings that are experiencing some sort of trauma in their life that they have chosen to live this way. And so we try with the homeless service providers and this team to make sure that public health is involved, mental health services, drug and alcohol treatment, that we have all those wraparound services. So we know we've done everything we can to push them to services. But a recent one we did, I want to say there were seven or eight, one went to the shelter. So we have to make sure the beds are available. And we make sure to document that the beds are available and then take the next steps. So sure, it sounds super easy, but.
I appreciate you saying that. And I think my point there is to illustrate, and you mentioned the word compassion. This is a very complicated subject because eight out of 10, four out of five folks are maybe not going to qualify for some sort of shelter or housing or bed, or they're not sober, or they have a drug issue, so they're out. So it is more complicated, but we've had some people suggest, well, why don't we just find some city property and build, you know, a big camp and a bunch of beds? Well, maybe not everyone wants to go there. And we, as we learned from the city attorney, we don't get the luxury to just force someone to go live there. So I want the community to understand that this is like, we're trying to figure out ways to attack this complicated issue. But again, we're dealing with human beings. A lot of them are not in, in the right capacity to fix their own ills. We send out the police department to be, in many cases, the social worker, to try to connect the dots because that person may be in a deeper place of trauma that's gotten out of control. You are lacking resources to go and get ahead of the curve. I mean, we're talking here, public, private, you know? We can't even get through the public part of it before we can get to some of the private stuff. That's complicated, I'm not necessarily asking a question. My other thing is like, we have a big problem where we have a lot of businesses, like you mentioned, that are not willing to participate in the function of the system here to penalize people for being criminal. Is there ways that the city might look at coercing some of these businesses to participate in this system? I don't know. I'd be interested to figure that out. One more thing that I want to put out there, we absolutely have to have compassion for the homeless. These are people, just like you and me. Life could have gone a different way and that could be me out there. But part of our compassion for these people is to recognize that a lot of these folks, and some of us have walked in the riverbed. It's shocking to me that, because I heard the city attorney say, it'd be really hard to define imminent threat. Be really difficult to say, well, it's a public health hazard. If you've been out there, oh my gosh, like you guys have been out there. I mean, you, you're putting on gloves. And we can point at things all over the place that is definitely a public health nuisance to the person that's there, if not influencing the environment of the waterway. And when it comes to imminent threat, I mean, knives, needles, there's people out there that are, you know, dealing with domestic violence and lots of other things. So I just would hope that we, as a city, that we maybe figure out how to define where that edge is. How far can we go to define what is a public health emergency? What is an imminent threat? That shouldn't be a gray area for us. And as a councilperson, I'm, I'm really challenging myself and us to learn what that is so that we can empower some of our law enforcement and these other folks within the city that can align their efforts and be incredibly efficient. We were all just at the Centennial Park celebration. You blink and in a month, everybody at the city got together for a common cause, a common purpose, and made something happen just like that. My fear with this is that we'll, as council people, be pressured to do something, do something. But we won't be thoughtful or empower our city staff to do what is necessary to do it correctly and sustain good efforts. So I'm throwing a bunch at you. This is a complicated situation that we can't just build our beds and fix it. And we can't just wait for the police to show up for every single time something goes wrong. Please.
Yeah, I think you're right. There's, there's, we have to be smart about this, otherwise we will get sued. That's, that's the end, end story, right? So that's what we've been working so hard on for the last few years, just to make sure that doesn't happen. But also. happen, but also to resolve the issues the best we can. My staff is going back out in the next 30 days to reevaluate what our homeless situation is in the riverbed. You know, as we've been putting more pressure and addressing the individuals up in the city, many of them aren't going to the shelter. They're going somewhere. So, let's, the intel that we develop and the information that we can, can build helps us make better decisions as a team on how to address a lot of these issues. So, it's a constant effort. What I will share with you is, is I'm not giving a specific date, much like Kristi has indicated. We need good, solid information, and when we go out there and do that, we take Good Samaritan with us. And we'll take the Polaris's out, and we'll have two officers and two Good Samaritan employees, and they'll work with and talk to those people. All my staff is going to do is locate the camp, see how many people were there, and who were they. And I will share with you that many of them, we've already spoken to, and many of them, Good Samaritan has already spoken to. And they just choose not to take advantage of a step up in their living conditions for whatever their personal reasons are. But we keep doing that, and we keep doing it, and, you know, the more that we can develop that intel and then come back as a team and figure out what is the best course to take with some of those individuals, then we'll evaluate that and try and put those plans into place.
One more quick thing, if you would. Is there, and I, look, I get it's, it's crazy, the laws and property and all those things, but is there a chance that, say, we had trashcans and we took property, we stored it 30, 60, 90 days? Is there a chance that we're storing somebody's stolen property in there? And again, I'm not tasking you with figuring that out. I, is, I mean...
No, no. You know, if, if there is something that is identifiable that has been reported, like it has a serial number or California driver's license number on it, that's being ran at the time that, that property is being put into that can. So, if it was reported stolen, we're going to know that. Now, many of the bicycles, if we talk about bikes, that's what we tend to see a lot down in the riverbed. If people aren't taking the time to register their bikes or to keep track of the serial numbers of their bikes so that they can't in turn give us that number when it's stolen, then we're just going off of, "What does the bike look like?" But they're usually spray painted or something else has changed on it by that time. In that case, maybe, right? But if it is something of value and it has a serial number, we're running those numbers when we're down there.
Awesome. And a last thing, because I'll quit talking because I'd go on forever. I'll circle back with everyone that presented tonight, because something I'd be very curious about is, have you, as a community development director, as a police chief, you obviously talked with many other police chiefs in different municipalities, city manager, city attorney? I'm not putting you on the spot now, but I'm going to ask you in the future, are there things that are happening in other cities in terms of a comprehensive approach or outside-the-box thing that you're lamenting that we haven't yet discovered or you're hoping that we might put some attention to? Think about it, because other cities are also trying a lot of things to address this issue, and if somebody might be doing some area better, I hope that you'll be open with us to edify us on that.
None of us will have a problem with that. But what I will tell you is, is moving forward from here, which, what everybody has to understand is, is that we're talking about a huge bucket. I've said this before in these meetings. That huge bucket is called homeless. The smaller buckets inside of that huge bucket are mental health, drug, alcohol, and just, I love the life. If we're going to do this, if we're going to be doing what other cities and counties are doing, we have to address those individual buckets one at a time to really resolve it in a big way.
Yeah. I completely agree with that, and again, I just want to thank the city for presenting this. I know it's a, a lot of work. I really encourage you to keep up that habit of aligning your efforts. Some of the recent results that we've seen, everyone putting their heads together has created quick and substantial and tangible results. I'd love to see more of that. So, let us know how we can continue to support you and continue to educate us so we can educate our constituents that are very concerned about this issue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for all that information. Now's the time for public comment on this item. If you would like to speak, you may call 805-875-8201, or you may be come to the podium for three minutes.
Nick Niklenko, resident of Lompoc. So, I'm a man who tries to find a solution for a problem. If there's a problem, I'm going to try and solve it in my mind. Here, we have an issue with people who are staying in cars, staying in trailers, staying in RVs, on our city streets, unregulated. So, what can we do about this? Safe parking. That has worked in Santa Barbara. We have axes. There, there are places here in our community that would be wonderful for safe parking. Walmart between the bank and the pizza garden, that's one location. Mission Plaza. Mission Plaza is huge. It's got so many areas in, in Mission Plaza that could be dedicated to allowing people to stay overnight in their vehicles. What about the, what about our lot right outside? That's right outside the police department. That's safe. If something happens, police are right there. So, we need solutions. We can't just talk about, "What can we do? What can we do? What can we do?" We need to do something because these people, they're in our neighborhoods. People do not feel safe in their neighborhoods with people who they do not know, staying in their neighborhoods in their vehicles. We need a solution. Our community deserves better than to see this. There are people who, they don't want to leave where they're living. They don't want to leave their car because they're afraid that somebody's going to get their stuff. They don't want to leave their RV because that's where they're comfortable. So, let's find a solution. Let's get this dealt with before it becomes even worse in our community, before we begin to have even worse problems. This could be a violent situation, and our community does not need any more violence. These people who are living in their vehicles, they deserve to have a place to stay where they know that they can't go every night. Let's say the cars are registered, they're insured. Okay, people aren't using alcohol or drugs. Okay, let's make this happen. Thank you.
Scotty, Carl Jones. I wanted to address Dirk Starbucks' question about the vendors. The health department are the ones really necessary to go after these vendors. As I guarantee, these people do not have food handling permits. They're not holding the food properly. I wanted to eat at one personally, at these little pop-up places. The guy driving, walking down the road with the cart. We have policies in place aside the industry. I've been a chef for 40 years, okay? You're required to hold hot foods at a certain temperature to maintain, to, well, basically decrease germ growth, okay? Cold food's the same thing. I guarantee these people are nowhere near it, okay? So, when I see these people out there, I know, I know for a fact that they don't have the health certificates necessary. They're supposed to have the, the food server handler permits within the people that are actually handling the food. The industries themselves have permits that are through the health department, you know, just the way it is. If we actually have a foodborne outbreak on one of these vendors, there's no way to track to see where the problem came from because they don't have the paperwork. They don't run the HACCP system like the businesses do. We don't have, they don't have the, the vet or the medical authority over them. So, I understand that problem right there. It is a huge problem, if you think about it. I mean, history alone will tell you how bad food service poisoning and the safety of food is. I mean, Napoleon lost half his army on the way to Waterloo. He might have won, but that half died to food poisoning. World War II, World War I, we had two soldiers in the bed next to the guy that got shot for food poisoning. Those are big numbers, you know? But we have people running around still today not paying attention to, to the basic standards of the food industry. And so, I do believe we need to look at these people that are not permitted and don't have the health requirements that are handling food and feeding our populace. We need to take a really close look at that because it undercuts the businesses that are doing the right thing. And if something goes wrong, food poisoning's not fun. Thank you.
Hi. I, first of all, want to thank you for the ordinance you passed on the RVs. I've got personal experience with RVs across my street with needles and all that. As far as the homeless, I don't think that we really have as many restrictions as what I've heard people are afraid of. It seems to me, now, there's a few issues. It seems to me that with the stores, like I know Home Depot, they walk out of there all the time, and the people who work there are so frustrated because they're not allowed to, to go after them. So, and I think you have a good idea. Do something with the city council to communicate with the big box stores that are getting robbed so much because this is creating an entire criminal element in our community. The more you let them get away with, the more it happens. So, there's got to be, we got to stop that. So, if, if Home Depot's policy, company policy is to let them get away, then it's up to us to tell them, "We don't approve of that policy, and we want you to do something differently, and maybe we can work with you on that." If you have, the police chief said about the different people who are homeless, "We've got beds for them. They don't want to stay there." But we were told by the lawyer that you've got, you have the ability to say, "You're not allowed here because we got places for you here." So, all we got to do is say, "You're not allowed here because we got places for you." Now, then, they, they don't want to go. That's, that's illegal. So, but you don't want to throw a bunch of like, mental health people in jail. But are we getting enough support from the county? Because we're, we hear from her that it's mostly county that gives us the mental health programs and, and all those services. So, what we do, we need a lot of those services to deal with these people, but it's not like we have restrictions that we can't get them off the streets or we can't get them out of the encampments if we have a place for them. But if they don't want to go, then we got to deal with them. Doesn't mean we got to let them screw up our community. And I'm, I am on this guy's side as far as crime goes because I know, I've had my experiences, and you know, I wrote you the letter. But I'm not for like, making it easy. I'm not for say, "Oh, well, let's, let's be okay with people sleeping in their cars." Thank you.
Do we have a caller? You can go ahead and queue up if you want, but we're going to let the caller go first.
Are you ready? Okay, you want to turn down, that down?
Good evening. You're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sarah Gumer, and the last couple of weeks, my husband and I, or the last couple sessions, my husband and I have spoken, and I really wanted to express my gratitude for these thoughtful presentations that the city has given tonight. I, I, I understand that you guys have tremendous challenges, and I appreciate the education. Thank you for highlighting what the city is also doing to address these challenges. I think that's a very important part for us to know what you're doing. And the next step would maybe be to get this information out to more of the public. Unfortunately, we couldn't be there tonight, and I'm sure many people are in the situation that they can't get to these city council meetings or attend them via Zoom. But it is really important information, and it's positive information, and it's something that we need to get out to the broader public. Thank you to the police chief also for his presentation. The trespassing form is a key piece of information that I don't think a lot of people know about. Tomorrow night, the wine industry is actually having a meeting with Supervisor Hartman to discuss the challenges we face in the city of Lompoc, and it would be great to get this information out to our industry. So, I just, again, I just wanted to say thank you, and, and I feel like this is the right direction we're moving. And more importantly than anything, when the community is unaware of what you're doing, that just creates so much frustration, but I appreciate you all taking the time to put together these very thoughtful and helpful presentations. That's all.
Hello, Karen Hellenstein, local. I'm hearing all the problems that our city is having, and the severity of those problems are increasing, seems like every day. Are we engaging the state? Newsom is the cause of our problems with his poor policies, bad policies, having to deal with his support of 30,000 undocumented immigrants coming into our country every day. Those people are displacing the most disadvantaged people in our communities. The chemical drug epidemic, the surge, more drugs than we've ever seen coming across our border every day. This is impacting our community seriously. And as our leaders, you need to be communicating directly to Governor Newsom, and you need to be telling him about the impacts to our community of his bad policies, poor policies regarding immigration and the drug flow. We're just allowing it every day. Thank you.
Hello, I'm just, like to comment my observations on regarding the, like, the, the location that I'm aware of for homeless, like, the homeless shelter. It seems to be across, outside the perimeter of town, kind of at the edge of town, and across a, a good one or two miles from like the city center area, but definitely across a bridge that crosses, that has a very narrow, it's an older bridge, it has a narrow passageway for the vehicles to drive, which by that point, they're already at highway speeds. And then, there's just a very tiny, narrow, concrete, little bit of an upstep up on either side for people if they're on foot to access this location that, it's the one I'm aware of. It's called the Bridge House, I guess. So, it's, you have to go out across this bridge. It's very, somewhat narrow with various, you know, slim margins for bicyclers. And so, perhaps that's an issue for some people if they're concerned about just, you know, if they're on foot, maybe they don't have transportation or just getting to this location. It would certainly be a concern of mine if it were myself and my children needing to get to that location and we had no transportation. And luckily, in years past, if I were ever homeless, I did have a vehicle to sleep in at the time. So, I'm thankful for that. Also, it just may be good to, for the city to consider possibly adding a secondary location, something that might, they might consider adding a secondary location that's closer for anyone to access if they're on foot and they have no transportation or, but particularly with that particular bridge that does cross a highway and it's quite narrow, there is no pedestrian lane or wide sidewalk, sidewalk for people to walk on, to cross over the, the San Ynez River. Maybe some type... Um, maybe some type, type of, um, community shuttle bus or something like that could be arranged. Maybe if it has, like, maybe one or two trips daily that can provide transportation and thereby encourage those people that are somewhat, um, um, not quite convinced that that's the place for them. Maybe they would go there and be able to know that they could get back into town easily and get to their appointments or the grocery store or get their kids to school, um, for example. So thank you so much.
Seeing no one else rise and no one call, we'll close public comment on this. Um, just a couple of questions that I'll ask staff to clarify. Um, Christie, I believe we do provide a shuttle that goes to the Bridge House as part of our cult transportation. I think it goes out in the morning and in the afternoon, at the very least.
Correct, Mayor. And if anybody's ever experiencing homelessness and gets in contact with the shelter, they actually purchased, I believe, like, a van that they, um, even their outreach team. If someone wants to go to the shelter, they'll get them to the shelter.
And then I do know that our own cult service also has a call service that if you need to get to a doctor's visit and have mobility issues, they will even go pick you up at the shelter because it's designed to pick you up at your home and take you to doctor's visits and, and make those connections for you. So I do know that's being provided. Um, the second question, and again, Christie, I will default to you. We already have a safe parking program in the community, and that some of the locations that were suggested are private lots, so they would have to, want to participate with the nonprofit that is running the safe parking program. And that program, um, is called New Beginnings. They're happy to work with any church business, um, uh, that would like to provide spots for safe parking. So the, the program does exist, correct? And they are still functioning in our community?
Yes. And yes, and it's a very simple permitting process for any private property owner that wanted to partner with New Beginnings.
Thank you. And then last but not least, um, I think, given we've recently had this presentation, it was recorded. For those that feel it needs to get out into the community, we might request that Tap TV excerpt this into a standalone, um, video that we could air on our channel, our public channel, um, and, and make available as a link so that people wouldn't have to hunt through an entire meeting. All our meetings are recorded, so if you can't make it, you can always watch these discussions. This is the public forum. This is how we translate and, and provide transparency and share information with the community. So if you weren't able to make it, you can watch the video, I think, pulling it out and having it as a standalone where we re-air it on Tap TV as a special show, or a link would be great. And then my last request would be for at least a short window of time, maybe over the next month or so. The trespass form that PD has, um, put it on our homepage so it's easy to find so that if there are community and business, um, members that want to find it, they don't have to go, I mean, it is easy to go to the search bar and type in, um, that, but let's make it easy for people to find. So maybe put a, a link to it on the homepage for, for a while. Those are the only things I think I heard from public comment that I wanted to, to bring up. And maybe, um, I'll reach out to Ms. Stalling and suggest maybe a presentation by, um, at least maybe Community Development and the police chief at one of their chamber luncheons to inform businesses what they might be able to do and to encourage them to prosecute. I think maybe if we worked in partnership, that, that is one of the ideas of using that as an outlet to communicate to those who may not be making it to the meetings. Any other thoughts or ideas from this discussion before we move on? Any of those recommendations need a support other than me just throwing the idea out there?
I think we have a consensus. No one's objecting.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you all, and thank you to staff for that presentation. Um, it's not an easy subject, but I appreciate all the work we're doing to address it from the different approaches and the partnerships we've built.